Okay, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Please join Councilmember Moore for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Council roll call, please.
Mayor Vera Papa.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Deaton.
Here.
Councilmember Moore.
Here.
Councilmembers Sistarsik.
Here.
Councilmember Masalavet.
Here.
All present.
Okay, approval of agenda and waiver of full reading of resolutions and ordinances by motion of the City Council. This is the time to notify the public of any changes to the agenda and/or rearrange the order of the agenda. Are there any changes at this time?
I'd like to pull item G, please.
G?
Oh, no. That's not the one. It's, uh, I'm sorry, it's I.
I'm sorry, what?
I.
I? Not G?
Not G.
I. Any other? That's it, thank you. Presentations and recognition. First one would be the introduction of the new Public Works Assistant Engineers. Mr. Meyer, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm pleased to announce or introduce our newest member of our Engineering Division Public Works Team member, Patricia Carsby. And Patricia comes to us from UCI with a bachelor's in civil engineering, then she went on to the Bay Area to get a master's in civil engineering from Stanford. So, and then while she was up there, she decided to get some work experience with the San Francisco Public Utilities Commission, and where she actually assisted in doing some development in public works, water facility project management. So then she decided that it was, the cost of living was probably a little too high in the Bay Area, so she decided to turn, come back down to her hometown of Corona del Mar, where she joined the City of Newport Beach Public Works Department. And for the last year, she's been working, helping them push projects out, and now she has joined our team, and we're really excited to have her. So Patricia, would you want to come up to talk to the council?
Hello. Thank you guys for having me. I just want to say I'm really excited to be here, be a part of the Public Works Team, be with another beach city, and just get to get involved with all the amazing projects and join the city of Seal Beach, so thank you.
Well, welcome.
Welcome.
And you're with a great team and a great city. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item would be the seismic survey project update. Who will be leading that?
Hello. Here once again. Happy New Year. The last time I was here was back in August, when we were talking about the seismic. Just wanted to come back and give a brief update. Won't take up too much of your time, but I wanted to revisit the reason why we're doing it, what it is that we're doing and hope to accomplish here. Basically, we were doing a seismic mapping exercise, creating a 3D seismic array of the cities of Long Beach, Seal Beach, Los Alamos, and Rossmore, and that includes the Naval Weapons Station. This project is now in the final stages. The seismic images will be generated using a collection of data from sensors placed in the ground. We'll have about 6,000 of these placed throughout Long Beach, Seal Beach, Los Alamos, and Rossmore. At this point, we have placed about 85% of the sensors in the ground, so some of them are already recording activity below the ground as we speak. And we've generated the schedule of the trucks, the vibrasized trucks, that will parade through the streets. We're starting in Long Beach, will be in Long Beach for about two weeks. This schedule will commence on Wednesday morning. Once we've imparted all the vibrations in Long Beach and the sensors that are placed throughout the project area, we'll pick up all of the information and data that's collected. We will then move into Seal Beach. We expect to be in Seal Beach probably the second week of February. And those streets, I just wanted to share with you that we will be on our Central Avenue, PCH, Ocean Avenue. I do have a slide with that, yeah. Yeah, sorry. Yeah, this map is condensed. The pixelation doesn't allow for a huge map, but I can email it to anyone who's interested in having a more defined map. So the major streets that we will be on is Central Avenue, PCH, Ocean Avenue, Second Street, Seal Way, 12th Street, and Catalina Avenue. So these are the streets that are kind of like the epicenter of where we need to impart the acoustic energy, so that all of the sensors will collectively pick up the readings and generate that picture of up to about 15,000 feet below the ground.
May I ask you a question?
Of course.
Did you say Second Street or Fifth Street?
Second Street. And that's a continuation of the route that we start in Long Beach. We're probably about five months away from where we started with Seal Beach, and because we had to get all the other cities on board and get the logistics of hiring the police department and taking into account safety. So now we are in the final phase, and we are due to put the trucks on the street on Wednesday in Long Beach. And we'll be there for about two weeks.
Excuse me, just for clarification, I believe you're going down Long Beach Second Street, going through the Coast Highway intersection down into Westminster. I think that's, he's talking about Westminster as a transitions into Seal Beach.
To Seal Beach, right.
Not Seal Beach Second Street.
Yeah, you're right. You're right. My apologies.
Thank you. I was looking at the map being Fifth and hearing Second, so thank you.
So I will, I will generate a daily email of our progress, and that will show the streets that we have completed for the day, as well as the streets that we will be parading on the following day. So I will need to contact you to get a good distribution list of everybody who needs to be informed of our schedule and our routes. So that's it, pretty much in a nutshell, unless anyone has any questions.
Just one, I wasn't at the August meeting.
Oh.
The name vibrator truck, does that mean the trucks are going to be moving down the street vibrating a lot, or how's that work?
The trucks, they are vibrasized machines, and I've left a stack of the brochures. They're informational brochures, and these are, the trucks, they do appear to be convoy trucks. They're large trucks, and they do impart acoustic energy into the ground. There will be a parade of two to four vehicles, always escorted by the police department. And what they do is they lower a vibrating pad that will impart acoustic energy into the ground. Those specific vibrations are what's needed to trigger the sensors, the geophysical sensors that are in the ground, and collectively, there will be about 6,000 of these sensors throughout the project area. So collectively, those will generate a 3D seismic array map. Now, we are collecting, we are collecting the data. The USGS will extract what they need to clearly define fault lines. Caltech will extract data to show patterns of the Earth's behavior as it relates to earthquakes that we do have here almost every other day in the Southland. So with that data, they're able to study the behavior of earthquakes.
And that would presume it's during normal working hours?
It's during the day. We're only on the street during the day, Monday through Friday, on the public right-of-way. And the trucks, they're noticeable in that they're large. They're noticeable in that they impart acoustic energy into the ground, and if you're in the immediate vicinity of the trucks, say about 600, of a 600-foot radius, you'll feel the vibration. It's not anything that will make you shake on the street, but it is noticeable. And the truck parade is what we call it. It's a slow-moving, rolling parade that starts at one end of the street and rolls down the street, stopping at certain source points, just to impart the acoustic energy.
Any other questions?
Okay. I've left, again, a stack of, did you have a question?
What two days did you say?
We don't have specific dates. We're looking at an estimate of the second week in February. Right now, we're looking at being in Long Beach for about two weeks, but depending on how efficiently we can move throughout the streets of Long Beach, we could be here a couple of days early, and we'll be here for about a day and a half to two days in Seal Beach. And then we will be out of here and get you the data you need to show where those areas of soil liquefaction are more prone to be.
I have a question.
Yes.
Does that include Leisure World, your time in Seal Beach, a day and a half?
That does not include Leisure World.
Can I, can you give me some stats on Leisure World?
We will go to Leisure World probably last, so we will probably complete Long Beach for about two weeks, then be in Seal Beach, and then go into Rossmore, Los Alamos, and come back to Leisure World. We're still working on pinning down a schedule for entry into Leisure World. Just recently, as a few hours ago, sent them updated insurance, so we're still fine-tuning those dates. But you'll be the first to know. I know you're, Miss Leisure.
Make sure I'm on that list.
Yes, you will be. Any other questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next presentation is the Community Emergency Response Team Academy. Corporal Clasby, please.
Good evening, City Council, Mayor, City Manager, and staff. My name is Corporal Julia Clasby. I'm the Emergency Services Coordinator for the Seal Beach Police Department. One of the programs that I oversee is the Community Emergency Response Team, better known as CERT. In the CERT program, citizens learn about disaster preparedness and basic disaster response skills that would help them and their neighbors in the event that professional first responders aren't able to get there immediately during a disaster. What I wanted to share with you this evening is an opportunity for some CERT training coming up in March of this year. It's a 20-hour FEMA-approved course. It's being held at the Los Alamos Joint Force Base, and it's a Friday night, all-day Saturday for two weekends, the weekends of March 16th and 17th, and March 23rd and 24th. In this program, the citizens will learn about disaster preparedness, medical operations, light search and rescue, fire suppression, team organization, and emotional first aid. I've left some flyers at the desk there, and if any citizens of Seal Beach are interested in attending the course, we would love to have them. Thank you.
Thank you. And that's a free course, or is there a fee?
It's 100% free.
Free course, yeah. My next-door neighbor took that a number of years ago, and it's been great. She's been involved in it forever, and we're glad to have her on our block as a member of that, so thank you very much.
Yeah, and there's, you can either register online, or you can call the phone number, but it's all on the flyer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, we'll have oral communications. At this time, members of the public may address the council regarding any items within the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council pursuant to the Brown Act. The council cannot discuss or take action on any items not on the agenda unless authorized by law. Matters not on the agenda may, at the council's discretion, be referred to the city manager and placed on a future agenda. Those members of the public wishing to speak are asked to come forward to the microphone and state their name for the record. All speakers will be limited to a period of five minutes. Any documents for review should be presented to the city clerk for distribution. Any members would like to come up at this time?
Good evening, Robert Goldberg, Seal Beach. I'd like to speak to item I this evening, which is a staff recommendation regarding dealing with the minimum wage increase that we had just a few weeks ago. I did prepare a short PowerPoint presentation, just to help me get some of these numbers across. Well, let's first start with what's going on and what the problem is. The problem is, is that with our part-time wage-salary schedule, at grade one and grade two, we have some steps, some salaries that are less than the $11 minimum, because January 1st, the minimum went from $10 an hour to $11 an hour. So these steps here are no longer compliant. That's the problem. Now, there's several possible ways you could fix this. My recommendation to the council is that we simply cross these off from the chart, and that if we, when we hire into these classes, these job titles here, that we just hire, if we hire an office aide, we'd hire it step three, and crossing guards, pool lifeguards, and the beach lifeguard trainees, we would just hire it at step two. That would be my suggestion. It's a very simple, simple solution. In actuality, office aide, we have not employed, to my knowledge, we haven't employed an office aide in the last two years, at least if you go by the budget. Obviously, we do have crossing guards and pool lifeguards and beach lifeguard trainees. Next slide, or if you can roll that up? Okay, very good. What staff is recommending is that we give an 8.7% pay raise across the board to these two grades. And so what was, in the previous slide was $10.12, here is now $11. That's the, that's where they came up with the 8.7, was that jump. And what they did is they took that differential from $10.12 to that, that differential, and they applied it to all these steps across the board. And then regarding grade two in these classes, typically in a salary schedule, you have a 5% difference between grade one and grade two. That's certainly the case in this schedule that goes all the way up to grade, I don't know, 30 or something. And so if you start at 11 here, what they recommend is you give a 5% jump for step one at grade two, that gives you 11.55, and then they went across the board, and then every step, the difference between a step is also 5%. But basically, they increased all 10 of these salaries by 8.7%. I have two concerns regarding this way of approaching the problem. The first is, I think this is probably the most costly way of doing it, because you're, you are taking care of the problem we had down here, but you're also increasing these wages, which were acceptable and don't technically need to be increased. Now, it's kind of moot with office aide, because we don't have any office aides, but we do have, as I said, we have these other classes. The, can I go to the next slide, please? The, the cost of this, can't give you a precise number, the staff report doesn't talk about the cost of it, but again, just looking at grade two, where we have incumbents, these are all part-timers, and so I don't know how many bodies we have, but the, but the budget gives these numbers of full-time equivalents in those two positions, and the beach lifeguard trainees, I derived about a half, based on a presentation that we got about two years ago about, regarding that these, how these individuals are trained. So this is what we're currently paying at a minimum.
You have 30 seconds.
At a minimum. This is the, the cost of that, at a minimum of this proposal. Can you go to the next slide then, please? The other concern that I have is that if you increase these two grades as proposed, now we don't have much of a differential with the next grade up, which is grade four, and it should, there should be a 10% difference there, and we don't have that. And this is going to cause pressure, upward pressure on the whole, on the whole system there. That could cost us a lot more money in the future. Can the next slide, please? Okay, so this is my suggestion. Next slide, please.
Time.
Basically, I'll just finish up, is that my suggestion would save about, a minimum of about $4,600 compared to staff's suggestion. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, please.
Joyce Ross Parquet. It's time you took the place. I'm glad to see it. I wasn't here. Anyway, Mrs. Deaton had a little letter in the paper regarding the fire, the in-lu parking and the garage and the fire contract. Well, the fire contract, I understand, is coming up in 2020, so are you getting bids from other cities to see what can, can be negotiated with the Orange County Fire Department? Are you going to get bids? You should get bids. That's what was done before. But anyway, there was also an article written by Mrs. Deaton, Councilwoman Deaton, in the paper regarding how wonderful things are. Well, they're not wonderful. So in 2014, I'm going over it again, because this is an election year. This is an election year. Three of you are going to be up, two new ones and one maybe. You'll have to run again, but there are three. Okay, I'm going back down the list. Dear neighbor, you weren't here, and neither were you. Three contracts to do these flyers of the cost of $66,000 for dear neighbor, and it was taxpayers' money, not her money. And I suggested she retire, leave and pay us back. She never did. $27,000 for an attorney to see if those flyers were on the edge. Well, now we know that somebody down at the supervisor's office got in the same trouble, and I don't believe these are legal anymore, but they shouldn't be legal here anymore. Okay, we had the beach flood. There was no burn put up. They told you, it's coming, it's coming. And you had to have the pumps on Seal Way. How much did that cost? Then she hired her friend, the contractor, on a contract to look up oil revenues, bus on Main Street, bid against a bid for the vacant pier for the restaurant, hired a company to find a location for a swimming pool, sent someone to Texas Enron to talk to them, and that's about the third time somebody's been sent down there. There's nothing over there on First Street on that vacant land. It has not been cleaned. That was where they stored the oil. The pier caught on fire because the fire department said, "We want a new water line out there." Whose problem was that? Not the taxpayers. That was your problem. And yours. And asked for a new water line, the fire department. Then the storm came, and what happened? The pumps broke again, and the water was all over the trailer parking in Bridgeport, and the pumps weren't working, had to be worked on, and then you had to get more pumps and pay for pumps for a year, because nobody had the foresight to see what was going to happen with the waves and the storm drains and the pumps. Then you had a contract for new equipment for the police department. I think Vicki had that contract. What did that cost? And the new equipment, they had to go to Florida. Four of them went to Florida to see how to work the equipment. It was no good. What did that cost? Then the food in the boathouse. The food in the boathouse and over at the other place in Long Beach, you know, that costs a lot of money.
You have one minute.
One minute. Okay, Main Street and parking. And I want to get to this new law. This is a sanctuary state, and it says, a sanctuary state had new laws. They're coming down all the time, and you're pushing the one back, but it says right here, there's two new bills coming up where you can't continue to push accessory units. People have just as much right, and for the, for my dear neighbor, for all of you, never came and you never look at what's going on in Old Town. You never looked. So how do you know when a bathroom is needed or not? Well, we've got these new laws coming down, and I think you should get on this right away, instead of waiting until you're gone. Why aren't you getting on it right away? After all, five mayors came down here and said you should be dismissed. One from Old Town.
Time's up.
One from Old Town. Two from College Park East, and one from the hill in Bridgeport.
Thank you.
Back again. It's, it's, it's election year.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening, council. I'm here to talk about the uptick in the coyote problem.
Can we have your name, please?
Oh, Mike, Mike Vericki, Old Town. Sorry. It's gotten to the point where we can't even have any pets anymore, and it's, I just don't understand why our lives are dictated by coyotes. It just seems really stupid. And, because it seems like an easy fix, but I know there's a lot of political red tape involved and with the government and so on and so forth. But it was brought to my attention by a city official that I trust very much, that word is that people and homeowners are putting out bowls of dog food for coyotes. And I'm asking you tonight, I'm not asking you, I'm begging you, to implement some sort of ordinance or law, that it's against the law to do that, because I know some neighbors are reporting this thing going on, and you can't sit on your hands and let it keep happening because you're just defeating the purpose. The coyotes are, if they're going to get a free handout, they're going to stop hunting. They're going to be coming into town like they are at a rapid rate than they were three years ago. And you guys got to start fining people for doing this. And I propose you guys start some sort of scale of fine. First offense be like $250 because of the, because of the nature of the animal. I mean, you're bringing apex predators into town and to, it's like feeding an animal at the zoo. I mean, it's really stupid. And I don't want to get into the two military bases in Hellman Ranch, how it's just, everything's just, they're breeding grounds for these animals, and there's a, you know, they're coming in here, getting, it's an easy food source, so they just stop hunting. So that's, that's what I'm proposing, I'm asking you guys for all the pet owners. I mean, the reason I'm doing this mostly because on the Nextdoor app the other day, there's a woman named Tracy, I forgot her last name, watched a coyote get her Siamese cat on her patio and jump the fence, run down the street, she chased after it. I can't, I can't imagine that. And it says, happening all over. It happens in Leisure World, I know. Coyotes sit out people's doors and wait for the owner to come out, walk with their dog, and they're torn off their leash. It's just, it's just, it's just, I just can't see why this is allowed to happen. So that's what I want to say. Hope you guys do something about it. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'm, well, welcome, mayor, new mayor and council persons. I just barely, about 5 o'clock, got to the cafra.
Name for the record, please.
That you'll be addressing tonight.
Your name for the record, please.
Oh, my name is Bruce Bennett. And when I got to the cafra, I started looking like I normally do through different items, and it jumped out to me that other cities have faced the problems of pension liability, crowding out the wants and the needs, whether that be hiring a coyote hunter, or whatever it might need to be, or hiring extra police. When we get to the point where these start to crowd out, wants and needs, a lot of cities have had very difficult times. wants and needs, a lot of cities have had very difficult times. And I think it would be boo hoo for everyone, all of you certainly, to work with Vicky to view the CAFRA. Now, that's item G. So any people watching on TV can go to the city site, go down to the council meeting on the left, move down and click item G, and then pull that up. And it's not that techno hard because I'm a gray-haired fox that can still do it. On page seventeen, and that's in all of your records, on page seventeen is a City of Seal Beach statement of net position. And if you look at page seventeen on the bottom, or excuse me, let's look at the top, you have assets on one side. Next page is seventeen, which has the aggregate pension liability. Now, you might note, this isn't really the pension liability as of of June 30th, 2017, because they report late. This is the liability going back to 2015. And 2016 was even more difficult year, from what I understand, from listening to our speaker that addressed everybody on the pension reform. And that, of course, hasn't and isn't yet reported. But on this page seventeen, you can see the number pretty well matches what I asked a few years ago when I suggested you get the five-year forward budget. Now, that'll be on, I think, your update because that was one of the items that was a goal that was adopted. But we had 31,535,000 pension liability. Now, you might note, this says the City of Seal Beach and it's the net positions. But I think you also have to move over from the general balance sheet. They have multiple balance sheets, ones for the city, ones for the private enterprise like water and things like that. And there's pension liability there. So if you look at page thirty-one, business-type activities, and you move down to the liability section, there's another accrued liabilities of 3,166. I just encourage you to take a look. Page forty-nine covers the time period and the valuation. And remember, we've had the third-best stock market return in over 100 years. Valuations are considered very high. And yet, we normally will have every two or three years a correction of five or 10%. Now, this is awfully good times. I don't think they could get much better. I hope they do because all of you folks trying to get a retirement will need that. But that's not the only element in the assumptions. And those assumptions are highlighted and the statements are highlighted on page seventy. That's on note number nine.
You have 30 seconds.
And that's the notes to the financial statement. And that goes on for about 10 pages. And it brings this topic up. This doesn't include healthcare. This doesn't include the fire liability that we might have on pensions. But these certainly could crowd out a lot of, a lot of wants and needs for the city. So I again ask for the five-year forecast. So you, as council members, before you vote something in, or whether you delay something, you can look forward to what next year and the following year are. It's easy math. It's not that complicated. It is, if I can read this in an hour and get here, and that's all just the highlights. And I'm sure if I read more, I'll find other items that I might have a question on. But I encourage the council members to satisfy fully your understanding. Newport Beach and some of the other cities decided to defer items and make some earlier payments. We've done some, but we might need to do more. The five-year projection could help.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, we'll move on to the next item, City Attorney Report.
Mayor, prior to the meeting this evening, the city council met in closed session regarding items A, B, and C on the posted agenda. The council did not consider item D. And Mayor, as you know, due to a pre-existing conflict of interest, you did not participate on item A. Council took reports from staff on each item and did not take any reportable action.
Thank you. City Managers Report.
No items tonight, thank you.
City Council Members' Comments. Councilmember Masalaavit.
Today I went to a Rivers and Mountains Conservancy meeting. I'm on that board. And I discovered that there is some Proposition 1 money that might be available for Seal Beach to participate in. That deals with the San Gabriel, the lower San Gabriel River and the mess we get every time it rains and all the trash that comes downstream. I don't know if we'll be able to tap into it. It sounded positive, but we'll find out. And it's something pretty important that we might want to get some more information about. And that's about it. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Sastarshi.
I attended the West Orange County Water Board meeting the other day. They're doing the final preparations for redoing the water line that the cities of Huntington Beach, Garden Grove, Westminster and Seal Beach are doing to put under the 405 freeway. And that should start, I think, February or March, something like that, be done by October. I also attended the State of the City meeting in Cypress. That was a nice event. And that's about it. Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem Deaton.
Hi, yeah. Well, first of all, this is our first meeting back since the New Year, so Happy New Year to everybody. And I wanted to kind of bump off of what Mike Vericki had to say and ask the question. I know we spent a lot of time putting our coyote management plan together. And on there, we do have the no feeding of the animals. And yet, as we know at the city, we've been getting the complaints that our residents are once again leaving food out. So my question is for Patrick or for the PD, one or the other. What are our enforcement tools? Do we have? Or what enforcement tools do we need in order to help stop feeding the animals?
Good evening, Councilmember Deaton. We do have some tools and resources, and we have been doing a lot behind the scenes, as you know, with regards to coyotes and meeting with residents and fixing some of our infrastructure. But to answer your question, I know Long Beach Animal Services has the ability to find folks for feeding the wildlife. I don't know offhand what the fines are, but I can definitely find out and report back.
Well, I think that brings us back to the problem that we have. We really need more hours from animal control. If they're gonna be out on the beach chasing down animals off of leash and over at the parks and, you know, all of that, are they gonna have time to go out looking for food? I know we've called in residents that have left food out. And by the time they get there, the food's no longer there, so they can't find them. So let me ask you, is that part of our educational plan on not feeding? I got a letter from you the other day that had that in there.
Yes, we've located what I'll call three hotspots in the city of Seal Beach, and they are College Park West, parts of Old Town and the Hill area. We've had lately about, in November and December, on average, about 23 to 25 sightings of coyotes. These are not attacks. These are just sightings that are reported to Long Beach Animal Care. And we sent out mailers to those areas, to all the residents, to let them know what they can do to help us keep coyotes at bay. So we're doing our best, and it's gonna take a team effort to be successful again this time around.
Okay, well, I know that the DWP land, you found that the overgrowth was contributing to some of the coyote action. And so I know that that was mowed and the city staff and the owners went to and took care of the holes and boxing it in and that sort of thing. But I think it's worth mentioning that not only should we as residents not be leaving food out or anything that's attractive to the coyotes, but that we also need to keep our brush down and keep the places where they can hide and create habitat down.
If I could just add one more thing, we're not the only city facing coyotes. The urban coyote has become prominent within our region. Right now, I talked to other colleagues in other cities, and whether it's Huntington Beach or Newport or incidents last year in Irvine where a little girl was bitten in the park. You know, one of our most important things is to prevent those type of tragedies from happening, happening in Seal Beach. And we'll do our best to make sure that does not happen and work with PD and Long Beach Animal Care and with the residents to do that. So we'll continue to work very hard on this.
Another outgrowth that came from the coyote management plan was putting together a regional informational, if you will, and just talking to each other. Is there any progress on kind of putting together a regional coyote? I don't want to say task force, but that's the only word that comes to mind right now.
Right. I think that's, in the past, we have attempted to do that. And we stay in contact with other cities on a variety of issues, including coyotes. One of the things that I've been going to every year is over at UC Irvine. It's a meeting of scientists and biologists from around the country that have faced the coyote issue along with other wildlife. And it's a very important meeting. I learn a lot. And absolutely, we can continue, like I said, to talk to our neighbors and find out what works for them. And every situation is different, you know, in Seal Beach. Like the resident mentioned, we do have a problem with folks feeding wildlife, and that's very detrimental to what we're trying to achieve here. And so we'll get the word out, and hopefully, we can turn things around.
Yeah, and I would like to see us use those finding tools that we have at our disposal if people don't, if people don't want to cooperate and because they're just luring the coyotes to us then. All right, thank you. That's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Moore.
Thank you. Happy New Year. Enjoyed some time with family and friends. Recently, I went to the swearing-in of the new officers for the police department, and we're at 35 officers now, which I think is great. I also went on a ride-along with Brian Gray and looked at the homeless encampments in Long Beach adjacent to College Park West and assessed the impacts of homelessness. I'm hopeful that there are ways to assist the homeless by aiding those who seek shelter and assisting them with the support they need through regional resources to get them back on their feet. I went to a meeting on the joint land use study for the Navy Base with Councilwoman Masalaavit. And this effort will be a very positive way for cities to work more closely with the Navy Base. I attended the council audit committee meeting regarding the recent audit and was pleased to learn that the city's financial statements were clearly presented. The audit firm did a great job, and I appreciate their work. My wife saw a family of coyotes behind our house, and I told her to report it to the Long Beach Animal Control website, which she did. She didn't go out and haze the coyotes, but I told her to do that. I encourage residents to immediately report any sighting of coyote, so our coyote management plan can take effect. And I thank you, Patrick, for, he sent notices to our whole neighborhood on what not to feed coyotes and what to do when you see one. I've listened to a lot of residents' ideas over the past few months on how to improve safety in our neighborhoods. And one of the ideas that stuck out to me was increasing the number of residents that have security cameras in front of their house. And recently, I met with the city manager, the chief of police and commanders, goncheck and bowls, about the idea of partnering with a security company to offer a discount to residents in Seal Beach. I'm excited about this opportunity, and the police will be presenting to council something in the next few months. And I look forward to a great year for 2018. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Deaton.
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to bounce off of what Tom said. I reported some homeless encampments along the beach, along the river, I'm sorry, last Friday. And even though they weren't in our city, our PD went out and got rid of them. So thank you very much. I appreciate it. If we start letting them grow, then we're in big trouble. So thank you for what you do.
Thank you. Yeah, I attended a couple of events. I went to the police department's swearing-in. That was a great event. Congratulations to all the men and women that got promoted and hired. That was really awesome to see the officers with their families and everybody around that. Also went to the joint land use study. That was very informative. There's a lot of different issues that are available on our website. If you're really interested, you can go there, and all the presentations and such are gonna be presented there. I think there's another workshop coming up, if I'm not mistaken. I did want to get a quick status on the West End Pump Station. We had a big rain and a lot of cities got affected. I know that we got a lot of rain. Can you give us a quick little status?
Sure. Just for background, as you know, we did a comprehensive audit of the station last year in the spring. And the recommendations that came out of that audit created a CIP, Capital Improvement Project, which is now in our, which was, of course, incorporated into our budget this year. Staff completed that project prior to the beginning of the rainy season, which was back in October. So we got a chance to finally be able to thoroughly test all the improvements, which were more, which was controlling, added a new trash rack or improvements to the trash rack. And of course, extensive training with our staff on the various systems. It performed excellent. The station performed exactly as we would expect. And it's, the best part about the station is we have some measurable rain, so we can actually get some testing on it. Because without the rain, you can only, if you fill up the four-bay, 300,000 gallons, it takes a couple hours and it goes out in 30 seconds. So it's really hard to test without measurable rain. So we finally got to put all the controls through the paces. And they performed excellent. And we also got some great data, so we can go back. And we're looking at it right now, so if we can now fine-tune the station, which we will be doing. And we're gonna bring out everybody for the next rainstorm to see how our fine-tuning does. So, but the station worked exactly as intended, and it's much more user-friendly than it was. So thus, that, in my mind, that translates to reliability, too. So I think the improvements have been very helpful and significant. So successful project, absolutely.
Great. Thank you for the update. Also, to piggyback on the coyote issue, Patrick, maybe in a couple of weeks, you could bring back some information on a hammer, so to speak, on fines and how residents can, you know, discuss and bring forward any eyewitness accounts of people feeding coyotes specifically. And just so we all know, because I'll be looking, I'll be looking as I walk my dog around who's doing that, but just some information.
Want their name, address, and phone number?
I don't want it. Just the hammer. That's all I want. Okay, next item, or the first item on the council is item A, City of Seal Beach Strategic Plan.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I'm just gonna highlight a couple items as we typically do on a monthly basis, just to give you a snapshot of where we're at on our strategic plan objectives. I'll start with Attachment A and Page A. And as you'll note, that what we've done to make this a more user-friendly document is we've struck through anything that's changed, or we've underlined something that we've added, especially in the comment section. So I'll highlight item number two, which is now complete, which is the securing of the outside agency permits for the pier construction project. And I believe we'll have an update for you at the next council meeting in terms of that project. Item three, of course, we've completed our annual winter sand berm construction and backpass project, so that item is now done. And then item number four, which is securing a new tidlands lease agreement for the beach. As some of you know that are working on this effort, we have now a draft lease agreement, and we've scheduled a joint meeting with the city team along with the State Lands Commission team later this month with the anticipation that this item hopefully will be ready for the State Lands Commission to consider and approve in February at their next commission meeting. I will jump to page C. Just highlight a couple items there on the improving and maintaining of our infrastructure and facilities. Item number one, I know Councilman Moore will be happy to hear, we've identified an IT, a citywide IT working group and moving forward in that effort. So that's item is now complete, but will be an ongoing effort. And then number two, as you recall, we did present to the council and receive direction from you on a scope of service for our long-term citywide landscape maintenance contract. Moving on to page D, item number two, that's now complete, is presenting to you for receiving five file, the classification and compensation study with recommendations. And then down, item number five, the city is now complete with initiating an employee wellness program so that we can provide recommendations to our staff for some healthy lifestyle opportunities. And that'll be an ongoing effort moving forward and our staff is involved in helping us identify elements to that program as well. And then finally, under item, or page E, item number one, that's now complete, is the council increasing our police department officer staffing by two officers. And as Councilman Moore indicated, we're now at thirty-five full-time sworn officers. So, that concludes my item tonight and I'd be happy to address any questions the council might have. As you know, that we're moving up the timeframe that we typically meet, since we meet biannually on the strategic plan in order to, for staff to have an opportunity to fold any strategic plan revisions into our draft budget. We will now be meeting in lieu of April this year in March. And so, we have a tighter timeframe within which to move forward with these objectives. But as you can see, staff's made pretty significant progress since October on this effort. That concludes my report and I'm happy to address any questions, as well as our staff members who have responsibility for overseeing these individual objectives.
Any questions from the council?
You might still be working on this. Is the citywide IT software group, is that just the group has been selected?
Page A.
C. Can you just expand on that just a little bit?
Sure.
Councilmember Moore, if I can answer that. The IT software group has been selected and we will be talking about all the varieties of software within all the different departments and looking at efficiencies and new software as well as existing software.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, I think we're good with that, thank you. Item B, at the appointment to the citizen council fire services advisory ad hoc committee.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I'll turn this item over to our city clerk, Robin Roberts. Robin?
Mayor and the city council, on December fourth, we received a resignation from District Five, representation of the fire services committee from Warren Hartley. The city clerk's office on December fifth posted the required notice of unscheduled vacancy. We subsequently received an application from a Leisure World resident, Donald Horning, and then we have brought this item to council for your consideration.
Okay. All right, at the request of Councilmember Masalavet, that the city council appoint Donald Horning to the citizen council fire authority ad hoc committee as representative for District Three. Would you make a motion?
I'm hoping you're here tonight, no? We did have a resignation from someone who had agreed and I'm sorry to say that he was no longer available. But we had someone step up. He happens to live in a different district and I'm glad there's an opportunity for someone to serve on an ad hoc committee that lives anywhere in Seal Beach. So, thank you, Donald.
Is that a motion?
And I make a motion, we approve Donald.
Twenty.
Second.
Second, please vote. Oops, I think I just canceled it.
Yeah, do it again.
Do it again, please. Okay, passes five zero. Thank you. Okay, item C, 2018 city council appointments as representatives to intergovernmental agencies.
Yes, Mayor, again, I'll turn this item over to Robin Roberts to summarize. And of course, mayors, you're, these are formerly known as the mayoral appointments. So, if you have any comments after the city clerk addresses the item, please feel free to comment. Robin?
Mayor and city council, every year, annually, at the first meeting in January, the city clerk puts together the mayoral, list of mayoral appointments to intergovernmental agencies. We've done that, we've prepared that for you. However, if the mayor has any changes to it, you can let us know and we can make that change and then post the meeting subsequent to formal council action.
Okay, I think we're good at this time, so I'll make a motion, can I do that? To adopt resolution number sixty-seven eighty-three confirming city council appointments as representatives and alternatives to the intergovernmental agency for 2018 and direct the city clerk to revise and post the website, the 2018 FPPCC Form eight oh six.
Second.
Any comment? Please vote. Passes five zero, thank you. Okay, next is the consent calendar. Items on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and are enacted by a single motion by, with the exception of items removed by council members. We have one item removed. Do we have item I? Do we have a motion to approve all the other items but I at this time?
Motion to approve consent calendar.
Second.
Please vote. Five zero, thank you. At this time, we go to item I, hourly wages for part-time seasonal and temporary employees. Councilmember Sustarsik, would you like to start us off?
Mayor, if I could, I'd like staff to have the opportunity to summarize this item and then we'd be happy to address Councilmember Sustarsik's question.
Thank you.
So, I'll turn this item over to Patrick Iago, our assistant city manager.
Thank you, City Manager Ingram, and good evening, council members and mayor. Tonight, we ask that the council adopt resolution number sixty-seven eighty-four establishing hourly wages for part-time seasonal and temporary employees. As you know, on January first, twenty eighteen, California's minimum wage rose to eleven dollars an hour and is mandated by state law to continue to increase over the next several years for employers with twenty-six employees or more. In order to remain in compliance with the state of California's minimum wage ordered through this resolution, the city is requesting adoption of a revised salary schedule. The only changes to the salary schedule will be to adjust grade one to reflect the new California minimum wage of eleven dollars per hour and to increase grade two. For grade three, it is recommended that it becomes obsolete for now, as there are no employees within that grade. And for grades four through twenty-three, it is recommended they remain unchanged. In subsequent years, as California's minimum wage increases, the city's salary schedule for part-time seasonal and temporary employees will need to be adjusted accordingly. There are adequate funds in the approved budget to absorb the payroll increases as a result of the minimum wage increase. And with that, I'd ask the council to adopt resolution number sixty-seven eighty-four establishing hourly wages for part-time seasonal and temporary employees and would be happy to answer any questions.
My question is, I read and listened to Mr., Dr. Goldberg and I was interested in his, how his proposal and your proposal fit together. Part of my concern was not only that you're raising some people and not the others, but because there's going to be another hourly increase for the next four or five years and is, then what's going to happen next time? So, I was, I was a little concerned of what the big picture or the big plan is here and how that's going to fix that problem without making everyone else feel slighted or else blowing up the whole, you know, the whole line. So, I just wanted a little bit more explanation, I guess.
Yeah, thank you for those questions. Those are really good questions and something that we thought about as we started to put together this salary schedule. One of the residents mentioned an alternative solution, which I believe is up behind me. So, what we did, we looked at three different things. We looked at, we wanted to take a long-term comprehensive approach because we know this is going to go on for some time, twenty twenty-two, we have to get to fifteen dollars an hour. One of the things we have hanging over us though is the recent class and compensation study that was received and filed, it hasn't been adopted by council. But there are, you know, plans in the future to take this to council for consideration of adoption. And now, we would have to incorporate some of those classifications within the salary schedule. So, we didn't want to sort of have a, sort of an automated escalator every single year because that may change the following year. So, we wanted to do it one year, see how the class and comp played out and then we could incorporate it at a later date. The other thing that we looked at, two things, we looked at the financial impact to the city and like you mentioned, yeah, we could elevate all of those positions, all twenty-three of those grades, but that would certainly have a great financial impact to the city. We are aware of that and that's one of the reasons why grades four through twenty-three did not have any type of increases. We basically looked at grades one and two and so you have the office aide and the crossing guard up there and you see the changes. As the resident mentioned, there are many different ways to do this. We looked at, as I mentioned, a more holistic approach to taking this on. And it's one of the reasons why we started that office aides, grade one, step one at eleven dollars an hour, because we, this is a public document that goes on our city website. We want to make it clear to everyone that we are meeting the state's requirement of this wage hike. We also looked at, from a human resources best practices perspective. So, when you look at the city's proposal with the eleven dollars at the step one and grade one, it's very fluid. You see that step one through step five, you have those open. It's not kind of like a strike through and the other solution. And that's not to take away from the alternative solution. I believe Dr. Goldberg is correct, there will probably be some potential savings financially. But again, like I said, we looked at it from maybe a couple of different perspectives than just the financial one. So, it's up to the council to decide what's the best for the city, but I will tell you that we looked at it from a variety of perspectives and this is what we came up with. So, with that, I hope that answers your question.
Well, I was just, I think he had a slide where it showed that step two is very close to step four and I was just trying to see what was going to happen next year because once you do it one way, then you're going to, you know, you, that was, it was more, not so much that there is only a few thousand dollars difference this year, it didn't make a difference. It was more like what, and I realize you're saying that it's a one-year kind of plan, but it's just made me concerned about how we're, what we're doing this year and how that's going to influence next year.
Right, and I can tell you that in our, in our class and comp study, typically, we have in this city a five percent difference in grades. And in the class and comp study that we have, that you received and filed, it's actually recommending a two and a half percent. So, it's all over the place in different cities, you know, they do two and a half, five percent. So, part-time, some cities even don't have five percent or two and a half percent. It's just, it's, there's all kinds of different ways you can do this and from our perspective, this is the one that we recommend to you.
Any other questions?
Are you done?
Yes, I'm done, thank you.
Mayor, Proton.
Patrick, a question that I have is, how many employees does this affect?
You know what, I may have to call up my management analyst, Nancy Ralston, to speak to that. I don't know offhand.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council, Nancy Ralston. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Right now, we don't have any office aides currently. We left that up there in the event that we want to hire an office aide in the future. As far as the crossing guards, I believe we have, and I'm just going from memory, I believe we have about six crossing guards and they are seasonal, they only work obviously during the school year. The beach lifeguard trainees only work about three weeks for the training position. And I think the last time, we hired about ten to fifteen. And after they're trained, they go on to be a beach lifeguard. So, that position is totally temporary. And that takes care of, oh, the pool lifeguards, they are also seasonal, most of them are seasonal. And Chief Joe Bailey, you may want to chime in here about how many pool lifeguards we have.
It varies, but it's around twenty-five.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Councilmember Moore, any questions?
Can you just explain how the steps work? Like, how does, everyone start at step one and then they get to step two if they are doing a good job?
That's a good question. Well, we'd hope that they start at step one because that saves the city money, but typically, it's based on experience and knowledge where you start. And the city has a lot of discretion in bringing folks in at step one or step two or step three or even step five. So, it's just at our discretion and it really is based on experience and knowledge.
And then, on those diagrams, is the pool, the pool lifeguard, is that grade two, all those positions under?
That's correct.
Okay. Okay, thanks.
I have a couple of questions. There are part-time employees, is it like twenty hours or less or around twenty hours on, I mean, I know the crossing guard I see by my house, is there a couple hours in the morning, couple hours in the afternoon, you know, what, September through June and that's it? I mean, I don't know how many hours that generates. And I know the, you know, I see the pool lifeguards, kind of the same thing, they're in and out and I wouldn't even say they do a half a day every day. I mean, I would say less than half. I guess, is that what we're looking at, like a half-time person?
Yeah, I think you're right on, right, yeah, you're right on with part-time. And the Marine chief could talk more specifically about his hours with his lifeguards, but crossing guards, you know, you see them out there taking care of the kids and crossing the street, but yeah, it's not many hours.
Okay, and then, is it normally like you get hired and you're step one? I mean, the first time you're hired, you're step one. I mean, that's how I always started a job.
And like I said.
I didn't go to step three unless I had a bunch of education and, but that was a different classification. It wasn't a part-time job. It was, you know, is that the normal procedure for?
I think there's two different perspectives. The employee always wants to start at step five and the city always wants to start at step one, so, yeah.
So, normally, step one?
Ultimately, Mayor, it's at the department head's discretion, again, as Patrick mentioned, based on the experience of the individual.
So, so we're looking at, you know, half-time employees at most?
Correct.
And starting at step one for most people. Was the old hour ten point twelve, was that the old minimum wage or how was that?
That's the current salary schedule, but the, we had no one paid at that level. The current wage, state law provides that it should be ten dollars and fifty cents.
Okay. So, we're right in the, okay, all right. I don't have any other questions, anyone else? Any follow-up questions? Okay, council, what's your pleasure?
I'll make a motion to adopt.
Second.
Okay, five zero passes, thank you. Okay, I think we have one public hearing item. And that is a public hearing to adopt the urban water management plan amendment. Do you have a staff report on that?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I'm going to turn this item over to David Spitz, our associate engineer, and we also have a consultant here on behalf of MODOC that's going to address this item as well. David?
Thank you very much, City Manager Ingram. Mayor, members of the city council, the item before you today is to conduct a public hearing requesting to adopt the 2015 Urban Water Management Plan Amendment. And as City Manager Ingram stated, I brought along our consultant from Arcadis, Serena, and I apologize if I say this wrong, but Serena Sribunlu?
Yes.
Pretty close. So, I'm going to turn this over to our consultant to go through a quick presentation we have and then both myself and our consultant will be available afterwards and after the public hearing for any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, city council members and everyone else.
Good evening, Mayor, city council members, and everyone else. I'm Serena Sribunlu with Arcadis. So a year and a half ago, the city adopted the, the 2015 Urban Water Management Plan, and I am back here today because the Department of Water Resources has reviewed the Urban Water Management Plans in the middle, and they needed a few supplemental data. So that is why we are adding to the revision. So just to give you an overview of what an urban water, urban water management plan is, so it's a comprehensive 25-year plan of water supply and demand, and it covers, you know, it evaluates over a 25-year period what your demand and water supply situation will be, and it includes drought contingency planning and water conservation measures that the city will do. So a bit of background, in 1983, it's the Urban Water Management Plan Act that was passed in 1983, and it applies to all of the California water suppliers that serve either more than 3,000 service connections or 3,000 acre-feet per year of water. And Seal Beach serves about 5,500 service connections and about 3,500 acre-feet per year of water. This plan must be filed with the Department of Water Resources every five years, so it's done in the years ending in zero and five. Last year, the last one was submitted on July 1st, was the deadline in 2016, and on June 27th, the city council adopted it. So what, the revised elements that DWI requested from us is three main things. The first one is for the water shortage contingency planning, so basically the drought planning. So the first one is, they wanted to see supplemental information to the water conservation ordinance, so they wanted us to provide specific water supply conditions for each of the three shortage stages. So we provided the three shortage stages, they wanted to see what percent supply reduction that those correspond to, so that was number one. The second thing is, in the consumption reduction methods section, so that's, consumption reduction methods are basically water conservation measures on the city side, what the cities will do. So things such as expand public awareness when a drought occurs, or when you, you know, move to a new stage of of drought, of shortage, you expand your public awareness, you do more policy enforcement, or expand your water use survey. So those are the other things that they were looking for. Then the third thing is, they wanted more wastewater collection system information, so basically we had to provide an estimated volume of wastewater collected within your water service area. And that's it, thank you. Any questions?
Any questions this time?
Nope, not at this time.
Not this time.
Thank you.
So did we, I do, I have a question. Did we comply with all of this?
So now you will be with this adoption.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so we'll open it for a public hearing now? Any public hearing comments?
Robert Goldberg, I actually just had a couple of questions, and they really overlap with Public Works, but they relate to several statements in this report. And they both have to do with Leisure World. The first one had to do with a statement on page 1-5, which says that Leisure World is served by the city through three master meters. The city maintains the water distribution facilities and the fire hydrants within Leisure World. My, my question is, is my recollection from the 2010 water rate study that we had, and I attended, was that there was one large 12-inch meter that went to Leisure World, and there was a lot of discussion at that time about the, the rate and et cetera. And so my question is, is are there three meters or one 12-inch meter? And then, I was also under the impression that on the downstream side from that meter, that the city wasn't responsible for water distribution downstream from that meter. When I say responsible, that, you know, if a pipe breaks in Leisure World on the downstream, downstream from that meter, that that Leisure World pays for it, pays for the repair of the pipe and the street, et cetera, so. These two statements are not consistent with what my impression has been, so I, if, if perhaps Public Works staff could set me straight, I appreciate that. The other thing is that in section 4.2, that talks about metering, there's a statement that says that the city is fully metered for all customer sectors, including separate meters for single-family and multifamily residential. And so my question is, my understanding from years ago when my parents lived in Leisure World, and they haven't lived there for five or six years, but that there were no meters in the basic apartments, which is, I don't know how many of those, 5,000 or 6,000, that the individual apartments or units were not metered. And so if that's not the case anymore, that would be very interesting. But given the number of units and residents in Leisure World, this, this generic statement would not appear to be correct if, if I'm correct about the status of meter, of meters there. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Okay, saying none, we'll close the public hearing at this time. Okay, we'll have a council discussion. Anyone?
I do. David, do you know how many water meters are going to Leisure World?
It's three. There's the one main meter on Golden Rain, 12-inch master meter, and then there's two second, secondary, tertiary, however you want to call them, meters, one, I believe by the Leisure World well, and one off the south part, off Westminster.
Okay, but the, the big one at the gate, sort of. That's the one that serves each apartment, right?
Well, all three can take water into Leisure World, but it is the main one that serves the entire complex.
Okay, there's 6,600 units there. And I happened to be chatting with one of the board members this morning, and he just paid the water bill. That evidently comes quarterly?
I can confirm that, but I believe it does, and it would be one bill to the entire Leisure World.
Yeah, and it was 120,000. So we're not taking anything for free. We're paying our way. Thank you. Mayor, if I could, just a, just a follow-up to Councilmember Massa Lavitt's earlier question, just to make sure that it's clear, the, the city was in compliance with submission of the Urban Water Management Plan by the July 1, 2016 deadline to the Water Resources Board. Now they've come back with these suggested revisions to the plan. I understood that. Okay, yeah.
Anyone else? Councilmember Moore?
How large were the other two water pipes, you said? There's one 12-inch, and then there's two?
Yeah, um. It, it's based upon the size of the pipes that are on those side streets. I believe another one is 12, and there might be an eight, but don't quote me off the top of my head without doing a little bit of research to give you those numbers. But they're, they're all large meters.
You said tertiary water.
My, my point in saying that was just that there are three. I didn't want to call them both secondary meters, but there are three lines that go into Leisure World.
Okay.
If one goes down, would the other two supply enough water for?
David, so the idea is there's one main main that goes in, and that's the main that we bill from, is that correct? And then the other is distribution on, on the Leisure World side?
Well, they, they all are metered and all provide to the bill. So the,
So it's one bill, three meters. Well, that's interesting, because we've never heard it explained that way before.
Any other questions?
When did they sneak those others in?
We've had them for a while.
They've been there a long time.
Okay, how about the downstream side of the meter? What was, how about, do you have any recollection of that?
Typically, lines that are after a meter are the responsibility of the homeowner, or in this case, the, the large complex Leisure World. I, I believe there are certain main lines that, that provide to the fire hydrants that the city will maintain or fix if there are a break. The majority of the lines off those main lines are the responsibility of Golden Rain and Leisure World, but there are certain, what we call main lines, that the city water crews would fix if there were a break and do maintain, including the fire hydrants.
Thank you. I think we're good.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the changes as required by the department.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Please vote. 5-0 passes. Okay, we have no unfinished or continued business. We do have new business, AB 1826 Organic Waste Recycling Program.
Yes, yes, Mayor, thank you. I'll turn this item over to our Assistant City Manager, Patrick Gallegos.
Thank you again, City Manager Ingram, and good, good evening again, Mayor and council members. Tonight, we ask that the city council approve the organic waste recycling program proposed by Republic Services by adopting Resolution 6788. If you recall, in October 2014, Governor Brown signed AB 1826, which required that on, on and after January 1st, 2016, local jurisdictions across the state implement an organic waste recycling program to divert, divert organic waste generated by businesses, including multifamily residential dwellings that consist of five or more units. While AB 1826 requires jurisdictions to include multifamily residences in their implementation plan, multifamily dwellings are not required to have food waste diversion program. AB 1826 places the burden on local jurisdictions to provide an organic waste recycling program. Some call that an unfunded mandate, but we'll, we'll just call it the law. Republic Services, the city's franchise waste holler is proposing a fully compliant AB 1826 program for the city of Seal Beach that will divert organic materials from landfills to reduce greenhouse gas emissions and keep the city in compliance with the law. Again, commercial food waste diversion is mandatory, and as such is the new way to conduct business in cities in the state. Due to the high cost of collecting and processing commercial waste, organic, organics materials, Republic Services has recommended that the rates be shared across all commercial businesses to be effective and to encourage participation. In fact, to date, most of Republic Services partner cities have adopted or plan to adopt commercial sector-wide programs. Republic has found that those that have applied the commercial sector-wide rate structure have realized very positive results in terms of participation, municipal compliance, and customer acceptance. In a generator-based cost recovery rate structure, most effective businesses would consider the increase in cost as prohibitive and economically burdensome. The cost to provide an AB 1826 compliant program to the city of Seal Beach's commercial sector is approximately $336,515 annually. There is a typo in the staff report, which says it's 366,000, it's actually 336,515. And this represents a 18.25% increase if the rates were shared across all commercial business, and more than a 300% increase if the rates were applied based on direct users' fee structure, or generators only. A direct user fee program would likely require significant fines and penalties for enforcement of non-compliant businesses in the city to increase participation in mandatory organics recycling. With that, we ask that the city council approve the organic waste recycling program proposed by Republic Services by adopting this resolution. To help me answer any questions you may have regarding AB 1826, we have Jeff Snow from Republic Services, as well as representatives from CalRecycle. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, are there any questions at this time?
Not yet.
A lot of questions?
Is there any more to the staff report, or are we done?
I think that's it.
There's anything I love, it's a state unfunded mandate. And if there's anything I love more than that is when they say, and so the city council can decide who to bill for it. And if there's anything I like even more than that, they tell us which businesses we can charge and which residents we can't. So I guess my first question is, if I could pull three votes here tonight to vote no, and send a message, what happens? To whom do I talk to about that?
If I can, and if CalRecycle wouldn't mind stepping up and, and responding to that question.
Oh, you're lucky. Thank you for coming.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members, Jennifer Wallen with CalRecycle. So to answer your question, if, certainly if there was, you know, need to kind of do more discussion or working with the holler on,
No, I would be talking about telling the governor that I,
Not gonna do, okay.
Yeah, no, I'm not interested in more discussions about it. I'm tired of being told what I have to do in my little community, and by the way, I absolutely support the environmental impact that we're trying to get to, but to me, we're all in this together. And to put our restaurants out of business is not an option. To ask a lawyer to fund the restaurant is inequitable. And to say the residential doesn't have to pay it at all, who do you think's going to the restaurants? So I, I think it's absolutely an obscene thing to ask a city council to now make that decision and, and say, you pay, you don't pay, and you have to pay. I don't think it's right. So if I pull three votes here tonight as no, we're not gonna do it, what happens?
So go through what, what the steps would be after that. So we would circle back with our, our management team, as we have had an kind of informal commitment that this meeting was gonna take place, and kind of moving forward on the program, kind of letting them know that it appears that the program was not gonna move forward. We would issue a 30-day notice to the city to formally give us a, a plan. We would have a public item that would note what the deficiencies were in not implementing the plan, and then still give the city time within that 30 days, if, again, you wanted to come back and say, this is what we're gonna do, we would present that in our item. If that plan did not come in, we would move forward with our compliance review, so we would turn over from our local assistant side over to our compliance unit. They would begin their process of reviewing where the city was at with its program. If that process continues again, you know, you have the opportunity to develop a, a plan, and giving quarterly updates how you're doing with that. But if the plan was not being implemented, we do have regulatory authority to implement fines.
And what, so what is that? So you have regulatory authority, which means you can come down and demand that we either do it or pay you, so how much would we pay you?
The, the law indicates up to $10,000 a day for non-compliance, but it's based on population of the jurisdiction, so the rate would be reflective of the city's population. But there would be a daily rate for the number of days that the city was not implementing the plan.
So by the plan, you say that we're supposed to come up then with another plan. So if my plan were, say, and I could pull the votes for it, that what we wanted to do is we as a town wanted to put the, the added cost and share it among all of us in order to have a vibrant Main Street and to keep our businesses open, and since we are the ones eating there and leaving the food waste there, would that be considered a plan? Because I've been told I cannot charge my, my residents.
Unfortunately, that's a little beyond where I, you know, that would probably be a discussion with the, the city attorney and our legal counsel with CalRecycle to kind of work, you know, what would be kind of the, what would be allowed in terms of rate sharing?
Well, I've been told the way that they, they passed it said we can't do that, so we either can or we can't.
I, I haven't heard that to date, you know, again, it just would kind of be up to kind of working out with the, how the agreement is set up and, and the like. But certainly, we, we have resources that, that could, you know, have that conversation and flush out what all the different options are for, for looking at sharing the rates.
Okay, well, I'm gonna let you off the hook for a minute, and I, I might come back, but there might be others.
Any other questions while I'm up here, or I can come back?
Anyone else? I just have, have any other cities declined, declined to adopt a resolution that you're aware of?
At this stage, I'll say that my, my region covers LA County and Orange County specifically, so certainly I'm not, you know, fully up to date with some of the other counties statewide. But certainly, we have a number of jurisdictions that are still implementing their program, so kind of a similar timeframe that they're, they're having a meeting so kind of a similar timeframe that they're, they're having a meeting similar to this and approving rates and, and the like, in maybe this first quarter of this year. Then we had recently, you know, a handful of cities that maybe we weren't getting that informal commitment of where the program, when it was gonna be implemented and, and whatnot. So we have issued some of those 30-day notices to jurisdictions and kind of asking them to more formally give us a, a plan.
So have they declined then?
Not declined. It's just, yeah, kind of maybe giving it a little more, little more pressure to, to give us that.
And when is the deadline?
Well, the, the law's already in effect, and, you know, likely you maybe do have some businesses that might already be subject to it, because there are some, some thresholds within the law. So again, we understand that there's been some aspect of needing to, to work with the hauler and work out what the program would be. But at this point, the, you know, the law should be, or the, the city's plan should be implemented for what the organics program was gonna be.
Mayor, if I could jump in real quick and bring up Jeff Snow from Republic Services, who can talk about other cities who are in compliance in, in the region?
Great. And other cities that are not in compliance too?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council of the City of Seal Beach. I'm Jeff Snow with Republic Services. Mr. Mayor, to answer your question, this law went into effect April 1, 2016. So we're going on almost two years, and I think that, that the, the representatives from CalRecycle Agency are now attending council meetings to help let everyone know that the time to comply is nigh. We, we, all, all cities should be very close to getting over the finish line, if they're not already. Our recommendation continues to be very strong for the cost sharing, and I think that the staff report does a good job of, of supporting that recommendation. AB 1826 applies to the commercial sector. And based upon that, that's why it's been our recommendation to share it amongst the, the sector. There have been a couple of cities that I have heard have also allocated some of those, that, that cost recovery to the residential. Again, Councilmember Deaton's comments, certainly I embrace them. It's, it's hard to deal with unfunded mandates, even when we really believe in the environmental benefits that they're gonna bring. But cost allocation and cost recovery is something that the law kind of puts on local government to, to figure out how to do it. Our sense is because it's a commercial program, it should be shared amongst the commercial customers, but that doesn't preclude the city from considering other alternatives. Some cities, San Clemente paid for it directly out of the general fund. That's not very popular in a lot of cities either, so... Your program, the way that, that the staff report is recommending, we think is, is substantially consistent with what most cities in Orange County and LA are doing. And more importantly, we believe that it will affect true compliance. It will not provide disincentives for businesses to not do it, and it will allow us to actually realize the benefits of getting the food out of the, the waste stream, recovering it to help the food insecure, and recycling it for energy recovery and to put back into the soils. So it, with this kind of a structure, we have a very high expectation, and I give you a high commitment from our company to make it work for your Seal Beach businesses and for the planet.
Okay, any questions?
Do you think, I'm sorry.
We're both on the same side.
Go ahead.
Is it possible to find out what cities are spreading the costs throughout the entire community?
Councilmember Masalavet, I, I can actually, the city of Monrovia, I believe, is, is one city. There's, there's probably a couple others across the state. I, I don't know offhand.
Last month, Santa Ana did it, Mission Viejo, Laguna Beach, Huntington Beach.
They spread it across every trash bill in the community?
The commercial.
Oh, no, that's not what I'm asking.
No.
Yeah, Monrovia included residential.
Councilmember Masalavet, city of Monrovia included residential, and there, there were some complaints from residents, obviously, because you're spreading this mandate to, to the residents now. And some people look at that as a tax on them, when it's, you know, this bill is, is supposed to be given to the commercial sector, like Jeff has mentioned. And so when they, they take that on, they, they do have some pushback, obviously. But the city of Monrovia, I believe, has, has went ahead and, and done that. So they have, they have, I believe, done that, spread it across residential and commercial. But that's the only example I know of.
Okay. I agree with Councilmember Deaton. We go to the restaurants, we leave the mess, and yet, we just walk away. We should be responsible for some of the cost of that. I, I'd like to, to know, I know there are other questions from council members. I don't want to cut this off. But I'd really like to know if there are other cities that are doing that. And I would like a copy of the bill or the chapter that it's in. So I could see what's, what it says, actually.
We can definitely provide that for you.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Deaton?
I, I just want to know why I was told it couldn't be done to the residential's.
We continue to recommend...
No, 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 that wasn't my question about what you recommended. I'm asking, why was I told we couldn't do it to residential?
I don't know, councilmember, if I told you that. If I was, I was clearly mistaken. The cost recovery and rate allocation is, is, again, you're burdened with that per AB 1826 language, but I don't believe there's any limitations on, on how you assess those.
Okay, that's directly contrary to what I understood. Thank you.
My apologies, councilmember.
Councilmember Sostosik?
Yeah, I just, I, I was looking at the rates, rates for, here, and I just wondered if you could explain a little bit. I wasn't sure it had current customer rates. And is pickups, like, how many per week they're picked up?
Yes, councilmember, different businesses subscribe to different levels of service and sometimes different container sizes depending upon their generation. And in the city of Seal Beach, Republic offers up to six pickups per week. So some of your high-volume businesses, our truck comes every day but Sunday to empty their containers.
Okay.
So the pickups are really the frequency of service.
I was wondering then, how, how much, I'm trying to figure out how much of an impact it would have on, say, an average restaurant or your grocery store or something. I was just trying to get a hold, but since Ms. Deaton has brought up the other possibility, what would it do to, if you spread it around residential? Because that also might have a, an impact, I mean, on your residents, depending on what it... Depending on how big an increase it is, so...
It, it would lower it for the commercial, sharing it with the residential, but we would need to do some calculations and, and submit them to the city and have the city verify them. I, I feel like I should probably mention another piece of legislation, an unfunded mandate that will be coming very shortly, and that's Assembly Bill 1594, 1594. And that was signed into law the exact same day by Governor Brown as AB 1826. And it will take the green waste that Seal Beach residents primarily, because businesses don't have lawns for the most part. It'll take the green waste that has been going into our Orange County landfill system as alternative daily cover, and it will require that cities begin to environmentally recycle that green waste through composting. And that one will certainly have cost recovery impacts as well, which most cities, we anticipate, will assess those to residents and not to businesses, because green waste is primarily a residential stream. So...
A residential and a public stream.
Yes. So I guess I'm saying that the residents are gonna get their turn by 2020 as AB 1594 legislation is complied with in, in our various municipalities.
So that one, the municipality has to recycle their own green, all their own green waste?
For the most part, your hauling partners and the county of Orange is working with the municipalities to develop infrastructure so that we have resources to be able to compost this material and find higher and better uses for it than putting it in the landfill as cover on top of the trash, which has been used and referred to, again, as ADC or Alternative Daily Cover.
Well, that's another one to deal with.
Well, but that...
Tonight, though.
Well, that brings up a question, though. Why, why aren't we looking at this as a whole? Why aren't we looking at, we know we're going to have this green waste problem. We know we have the food waste problem. How do the multifamily units fit into this? They fall under it, but they don't have to do a program. Do they get billed for it? Are they part of the commercial sector? Are they residential? Then they're gonna get the green waste too. How, why aren't we looking at this, sir, as a whole package that we're, we're going to do that makes sense? Rather than, well, we'll build these people over here, but, oh, well, wait, maybe we'll build them and them, and then we'll build these people over here. And certainly, some people have green waste and other people have food waste. It seems to me that we should be looking at this as a whole.
I, I agree with you, councilmembers.
As, as a food hole, as a, as a waste hauler, you should be looking at it as a whole.
As a whole, and, and I am aware of a couple of cities that have, but most cities are waiting until the legislation requires them to act on these unfunded mandates before they address them.
And what is that date?
For AB 1594, the state law is 2020. Am I correct with that? 2020. The county of Orange, which Seal Beach is part of the Waste Disposal Agreement, the WDA, and all of our waste is regulated to go to their system. They have made indications that they will begin implementing changes in 2019. And we're active already in, in working with OC Waste and Recycling and helping to find the best solutions. And what it's going to come down to will not impact your residents, but it's the three active landfills in Brea, Irvine, and San Juan Capistrano. And they're probably gonna kill me for talking about this publicly, but it makes a lot of sense to compost at landfill sites. We already have solid waste permits. We have lots of nuisance mitigation, but those cities may not want it. So then if we have to drive it out to Moreno Valley or somewhere really far away, it's gonna impact costs negatively for everybody in the county if we don't develop the infrastructure more locally. So we're hoping to work with all of our cities to support the most local infrastructure in partnership with the county to minimize the cost impacts on everybody for complying with AB 1594.
So can the green waste be turned into energy like food waste?
It's BTU and caloric value do not make it the best, the, the best feedstock for anaerobic digestion. Yes, it can go into certain anaerobic digesters, but it's gonna cost a lot more than composting. And composting green waste will create good benefits for our soil and other parts of our environment.
And good income.
Yeah.
For the waste hauler. Because they're gonna be doing the composting on their sites, and they're gonna sell the bags of compost.
Well, Sand District already has their compost that they're giving away.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I mean, that's why I was wondering, since Sand District's already composting, how, how's that happening?
They compost in Yuma, Arizona, and in Kern.
Our sanitation district goes to Yuma, Arizona to bring me those bags of compost?
Yes, councilmember. They compost in Yuma, Arizona, and in Kern County. We don't want to put those high costs of transportation on our local cities. We would rather do the windrow composting locally so that we can, again, minimize the costs.
We, we did have composting at the JTFB and, sorry, we did have composting at the JFTV for a while, and there were lots of complaints from a surrounding neighborhood, so you have to, site selection is an important, important thing.
Councilmember Moore?
I have some comments, but no more questions.
And I apologize for detouring with AB 1594, but I think Councilmember Deaton's right. We should talk about all of the organics legislation. They're all coming. But the only one that, that is currently in law and requiring compliance is AB 1594. I think my point was, was that residents are gonna get their turn and be able to contribute to a better environment.
I, I appreciate that very much, and I, I do think that we should have all of the information on the table. It shouldn't be piecemealed, and so I appreciate your doing that.
And if I may just put them all out there.
All right, here we go.
SB 1383 is still in the rulemaking stage, but it's highly anticipated that it will pass. And I'm pleased that your AB 1826 program, as proposed, will comply with it in advance. And it requires some food recovery to help with the food insecurity issue in society. Your program from day one will already incorporate that, so...
What kind of sacrifice is the waste hauler doing?
So, thank you for that question. We will be, we will be investing over three-quarters of a million dollars, refrigerated food recovery truck that we provided to food finders, trash truck at almost $400,000, containers. So almost $700,000 in cash outlay for us to start your program with only...
Oh, wait, wait, wait. It's not my program. It's the state's program, please.
Start the state's program for the city of Seal Beach with only $238,000 in revenue, because this is only an 11-month program.
What do you mean, an 11-month program? Explain that.
January 1 of 2019, a new program, expanded program, will be required, Tier 3 of AB 1826.
Oh, I don't think we know enough. We don't know enough. Uh-uh.
The...
Tier 3, what happened?
The staff report has, has a table.
Yeah, no, I, I know.
I know it's in here, but...
But then what, what do you expect from us then?
What I'm hopeful of is that we'll develop more infrastructure by Tier 3.
Who's "we"?
Republic Services, and our industry, and County Waste and Recycling, so that we'll have more infrastructure to recycle all these organics. And with a larger supply of infrastructure, we hope that the, the per-ton processing rates can come down.
Are you talking composting now?
Composting and anaerobic digestion and pre-processing are creating a slurry that we then convey.
And you're, are you talking about new sites for that?
Republic Services is planning to, at two current solid waste facilities, our Anaheim facility and our American Transfer Station, to invest in pre-processing equipment that will make a slurry of the commercial food waste that we then bring to the, the wastewater treatment plant for digestion.
In Huntington Beach?
No, in Anaheim. And the American Transfer Station is in the Harbor area, Gardena.
I used to live right next door to the sanitation district where they make slurry. It's wonderful.
Yeah.
Yeah, the, the great partnerships that have come from this are the publicly-owned wastewater treatment plants that have very advanced anaerobic digestion facilities and are finding that, that they really like our food slurry material that, that we bring to them. It has a much higher energy value than the slurry that comes from our bodies after we've taken a lot of the good energy from it to, to live our lives. taken a lot of the good energy from it to, to live our lives. So we are currently partnering with LA County Sanitation District and using the Carson facility. We are quite confident that by Tier 3, January 2019, we will have a partnership with the Orange County Sanitation District, again, saving money for whoever gets assessed the rate by having less transportation from the pre-processing plants.
I'm really glad I moved.
Seal Beach is a place that I think anyone would be in a dream world to live in.
Yeah. Especially being next door to the Sand District. Okay, so.
Any more questions?
One of the Cal Recycle?
Do you have one?
Uh-huh.
Thank you very much, Mr. Snow.
Thank you.
Jennifer Wallen again, with Cal Recycle.
All right. So what does Grace look like? You can see what we're struggling with.
Right. Yes. And again, there, there are some cities that, again, maybe similar timing to when they're having their discussion come up and, um, you know, it sounds like this was kind of the, the first discussion on.
Well, actually, we've had several, but I don't think it's ever come to this level because tonight we were supposed to approve it.
Okay. Okay. So, um, so, I mean, I can't, can't kind of overpromise. I mean, I would still give an update to our, you know, our team.
You'd still turn us in. That's what you're saying.
But, but I think it would, you know, make it, if it was just, you know, maybe needing that extra time to, to kind of work on things versus maybe some of the other comments you made that maybe this wouldn't be moving, moving forward, so.
All right. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Moore, do you have some comments?
Yeah. No more questions.
No more questions, sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think it's important to recycle organic waste and, and the city should support efforts in that area. I personally drive natural gas vehicle. I comp, we compost at our house. We recycle water. So I personally think it's important to be mindful of the environment and be green. However, I do not feel that the state should force the city to do this program. I think at some point, we as a city need to send a message back to Sacramento that we will not accept their programs blindly that have a negative financial impact on our local businesses in our city. Therefore, I recommend we do not move forward with any of the options.
So $10,000 a day you're willing to pay?
No, I don't think we should pay that either.
And then when they come, I think they go to you first to put you in jail. I'm not sure. What happens after that?
Can I make a comment? I think if we show we're making a good faith effort to the state and to the agency that, you know, they'll work with us. But I, I need, we need some more information on how we can consolidate the next two or three bills and Tier 3 and all of that stuff into one.
Program.
Yeah. One program and get it done, get it adopted, and everybody share.
Yeah. I agree with that too. I think the, you know, the residents and the visitors who go out to eat are basically going to foot the bill one way or the other anyway, you know? So if you don't go out, should you pay for this as a resident? And there's probably a lot of residents that don't eat out that often, so I'd like to at least think about that a little bit more as far as, you know, citywide billing, so to speak. And I wouldn't be opposed to, you know, waiting and putting it off and just kind of seeing what the other cities are doing, in the meantime, what the costs are associated with it. And this is probably one, one resolution we don't want to be number one at. We can kind of wait, right?
I don't think we are number one.
Well, we're number two, but.
I don't mind being behind Monrovia. It's okay.
I think we can wait. I mean, it's not, you know, and work with, with them and kind of figure out the big picture, so to speak.
Yeah.
Don't you think?
Yeah. I, I think I'd like to get some more information too, you know, to try to figure out what the best. And, and, and my question before about the, the rates was how, how would this affect the Shell Shop or the Purple Shop? You know, I, I guess it's just a rate increase on all their rates, but it, I just wanted to just kind of consider the big picture and get a ballpark.
Doesn't it say 18% increase? So, I mean, an 18% increase on your trash isn't nothing, you know? And I, I agree that maybe everybody doesn't go out to eat, but if, if the residents are going to have green waste, and when you take the green waste and you take the food waste and you put a program together that covers all of it and share it with everybody, then the restaurants are picking up your green waste while I'm picking up their food waste. And, you know, we have a program that makes sense that is going to lighten the load on our landfills, which is good for all of us.
Absolutely, yeah.
So, anyway, that's kind of where we are. Thank you for being here.
Mayor Verapapa, can I just confirm? I had a motion from Councilmember Moore, but I didn't hear if there was a second to reject or not approve Resolution 6788 and options there.
I didn't make the motion. I just recommended.
So I think the resolution dies for lack of a motion.
Mayor, if I, if I could just make a recommendation, my recommendation would be that we just continue the item because it sounds like, and want to make sure that staff has clear direction, that you're asking for, for us to come back to you with a, a more in-depth analysis of both of the two Assembly Bills, AB 1826 and AB 1594, with a more in-depth analysis to give you some time to think about this holistically versus what we've brought to you tonight. So my recommendation, if that's the case, would be just to continue the item until we can come back to you in the near future. I think it's important also, since we have Cal Recycle representatives as well as our waste hauler here, that they understand the direction since we need to work with them on compliance.
Yeah. Then I, I would like to say that I think that Republic Services needs to be out in front with us on this and they need to help us get there because there are, there, there are people. So they got to help us get there. And they may need to, you know, alter their recommendation into something that fits our, our town. We're too small to ask our businesses to just shoulder anything that the state shoves down our throats.
Okay. So is there a motion to continue this item?
So moved.
Second.
Please vote. Five zero passes for that. Okay. At this time, we'll adjourn the city council meeting on Monday, February 12, 2018 at 5:30 PM to meet in closed session if deemed necessary. Thank you, everyone.